Okay, here we are. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for October 7th. Let me read the COVID statement. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all the butters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program of the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website with the notice where to email with. It is strongly suggested that you test the link in advance of the meeting to make sure you are able to access it. Please report any issues to jcaschell@plastow.com. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A block box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to and during the meeting to jpeck@plastow.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud and become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17. It will be live streaming on the town's website. Okay. I hope I don't have to read that too many more times. Let's have the roll call, if you would. Charlene?
Right. James Peck?
Here.
Susan Moore?
Here.
Lori Malat?
Here.
Karen Robinson?
Here.
Francine Hart?
Here.
Jeffrey Adams?
Here.
Tom Alberti?
Alberti, sorry.
Here.
Greg Taylor?
Here.
John Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. First order of business is review and approval of the September 16th meetings, meeting minutes, I should say. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I don't know.
Okay, Karen, go ahead.
Motion to accept meeting minutes of the meeting.
Okay, I get a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Francine. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any abstentions? I don't think so. Motion passed at 5:00. Thank you. Okay, we have some workshop items on the agenda today. The first one is the final review of the rules. I did, Tom just passed out some copies that I had, in case you didn't make your own copy. What we said we'd do is we would read them one more time tonight, the changes only. And if anybody has any further tweaks, we could do that tonight. And Tim was very nice to come up with a section in here that hopefully you got to read on the meetings, which is on page six. So, let me just go through these real quick. I think it's important, I guess, that I read them, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll read each one of them. On page one, the first, if you look at the copies I sent, are in red, but it's Section 225-2B, 1, at the end, "as offered by the Office of Strategic Initiatives, OSI, and other New Hampshire state agencies." I don't think anybody has any objection to that, so. Again, this is the third time we've read these, so. Go to page two, under G, and it reads, "Board members, ex officio members, and alternates are expected to attend all meetings. However, in the event that they are unable to attend a meeting, the Planning Board Chair shall be contacted." We change that to the Planning Board Chair. And by the way, I sent out my contact information last at an email, so you should all have it. And everybody's here, so I guess that's not an issue. Going to page three. Under B, instead of Administrator, we changed to Planning Staff, and we struck, you can see in the first part of the sentence, first part of the paragraph, and we added, "All duties described will be covered by available personnel." Under Section 2, "All personnel deemed necessary by the Board will, shall be either contractors or town employees and who are, and who are part of the," I guess we struck also the "and" after employees there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, yeah.
So that should be struck. Where, it just reads, "Employees who are part of the town's personnel plan." And at the end, it says, "In accordance with RSA 376." And we struck the last item, 3. Okay, so I'm going pretty fast here, but stop me in my tracks if you see anything you want to change. If you go to page four, Tim had suggested, instead of having just a laundry list there, we put bullets, if you will, 1 through 8, in terms of the duties of the Chair. And so, the duties read now. Number 1, preside over all meetings and hearings, that's no change. Number 2, shall set the agendas with input from the planning staff. Number 3, shall review and approve the annual Planning Board budget after consultation with the full Board. Number 4, shall supervise the preparation of an annual report. Number 5, shall appoint such committees as directed by the Board. Number 6, shall affix his/her, his or her signature in the name of the Board. Number 7, shall speak for the Board. And number 8, shall perform other duties customary to the Office. Any objections there?
No.
Okay. We're moving right along here. Then we go down to the bottom of the page to D2. We just added the draft there. Draft and approved minutes are posted. Item 4, at the end, "Deliver agendas and draft meeting minutes and meeting materials to all Board members in time for an adequate review before the meeting, at least the Friday before each meeting, unless extenuating circumstances as determined by the Chair." No objections there. Number 5, notify the Chair of each application received and notify the entire Board of all correspondence and emails directed to the Board within a reasonable timeframe. Okay. At the top of the next page, we added the timestamp. Item 8, D, "No correspondence shall be sent until reviewed and approved by the Chair." Okay, the next page, defer to Tim here. Tim did write this, so we had, we wanted to clarify the whole thing about the 9:00 PM. And I think, I like the way Tim did this. He broke it into workshop meetings versus public hearing meetings. So, Tim, you just, if you just want to comment on what you did there?
Well, pretty much what you just said.
Split it into workshop meetings and public hearing meetings.
And the primary reason for doing that, I mean, we, as we've done for a while now, we typically designate the first Wednesday of the month as a workshop meeting. But we don't, we don't want to have the rules and policy so, so regulated that if we need to have hearings on the first Wednesday, we certainly can do that. So I think these allow for that to happen, and vice versa. We don't want to exclude talking about workshop items in the public hearing meetings, but each of those would have their priorities as they specified. The other thing on the public hearing meetings, we had talked about not wanting to go beyond 9 o'clock. So I tried to lay out some conditions that could happen. So, it was an attempt to, I mean, well, you know, what you don't want to do, I don't think, is have people in the audience, applicants, waiting, and then at 5 minutes and 9, announce, "Sorry, we're going home in 5 minutes."
Right.
See you in a month. So if it looks like a long agenda, right up front, announce that we're going to, you know, not start any new hearings. It specifies that. So, the hearing is already in progress, we would continue, continue that hearing. And then, I picked an arbitrary time, 8 o'clock, that the Chair would look ahead and see what's, what we haven't yet talked about on the agenda. And it may be, if there's still several hearings ahead, that rather than our normal process of making a determination whether a plan was complete and then going right to the public hearing, we might want to consider determining if all of the plans can be accepted as complete. That normally takes a very short time. That satisfies our 30-day interval. And then go back in order and start the public hearings.
Right. I thought that was good. I actually thought that 8:00 PM was a good arbitrary time, because that gives you time to do the completeness. If you have 2 or 3 left, you could vote on the completeness, and that would take you 15, 20 minutes. Then you, then you just keep going the way you were. I mean, the whole idea here is not, not to go beyond 9, not to, you know, cull ourselves and not really be able to focus on, on what we should be focusing on. So I, I mean, I could read the whole thing, and I don't, but I, if everybody's had a chance to read it, you know, I'm going to waive reading it. I know, did you have a couple?
No. Tim just answered all of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
No, appreciate it, Tim. I mean, the way he wrote it, I think, explains it. And, you know, I'll have to keep that in mind at each hearing. I'll have to remember to do these things, but I think it's important that we do that. So if nobody has any objections to that area, let's go right to page 8. At the bottom, and the only exception on personal electronic devices were with the Chair or the Planning Director, because we have to receive email or calls from the butters or during the hearings. No objection to that. I'll turn to page 9. We just added the fact that the Chair may change the order of public hearings at his discretion. That means if we have a small public hearing up front, I would just move that public hearing up, so that, you know, we could get that one out of the way. Okay, I think that's it. That is it. If that's, if there's no more changes or no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rules or procedure, and then we can actually post them, and we would put at the top, you know, they were amended as of 10/7/2020.
I'll make a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as amended on today's date, which you just read. 10/7, sorry.
Okay, motion by Tim. A second, please. Second by Karen. Any further discussion?
No.
To being done, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. 5:00. We have some rules. Now we have to follow them. It's very important that we do have rules and that we do follow them, I think. Okay. We're going to bang through the agenda here. Actually, I'd like to go to item 5, because it's probably quicker than the master plan, if you don't mind, Tim.
No.
Lori had asked a question, and I thought it was a good question. We just wanted to keep track of some of the expenditures related to the master plan and to impact fees. So, I asked John and Deanie to come up with this schedule. Be honest with you, I didn't look at it till I got here tonight, so I've got some questions on it. I'm not sure whether you can answer the questions, though, John, but we can ask you anyway.
Sounds great.
I guess the first page is just the amounts that we spent in 2019, if that's what it looks like. There was an encumbered amount and the full amount was spent. It looks pretty straightforward to me. So we encumbered $15,400, and it was spent during the course of the year. And that's the master plan update that we all, not all of us, but most of us were involved with. And Tim's going to talk about some of the action items. The second page, I'm a little puzzled by, because I'm not exactly sure. I guess it's 2020. I think there was an encumbrance. Is that right, Francine?
Yeah, if I may speak, I believe that the Board of Selectmen, at the end of December of 2019, encumbered approximately 73, or 7250, from the master plan update and encumbered the funds for this year. So if those funds are not spent by the end of this year, they're going to lapse.
And I don't see how we would spend them. So that's actually good, good news, that that would go back into the unassigned fund?
I believe it does. I guess my question may be to Tim and to John is, do we still owe Resilience any money for this? No, we're done.
I asked that question in June.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So it's, then if you, you have no further need for these funds, and they will lapse into the unassigned fund.
I mean, I'll defer to John or Dee.
I believe.
I don't think so.
Now, when you're talking, they're going to lapse, that's June 30th.
No, 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 no. We encumbered these funds that will lapse December 31st of this year. So if the money is not spent, it goes into the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, I don't see how we're going to spend
Okay.
these funds in that short of a period.
All right, so we don't need to encumber these further? The Board doesn't need to encumber these further?
Well, I'm going to defer to Tim. Tim, can you, can you put them out further?
Well, you would have to have a contract, a legal contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
And I don't see anything in our budget line items to say that you are going to use this, so.
We finished the complete master plan, so there's no real need for it.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, there's some, probably some things in the master plan that could be updated, but I don't, I can't see us, I mean, there's nothing major.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I can't see us getting together and forming, getting an RFP together and sending that out, getting a quote back, and
All right.
So, yeah, I would say those
Okay.
that, that money would, would not be spent, would go back to the general fund
No problem, there's no, nothing wrong with not spending money.
Then be in the unassigned fund balance.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I think that clears it up. Does that answer your question? The other one was impact fees, and this is 2019. I don't think we encumbered anything for 2020 on impact fees. I'm pretty sure we didn't. That was the impact fee updates we did, again, in 2019, we updated all the impact fees. Not all of them, but 2 or 3, I think. So was, I don't think there's any further question on that. Okay. Well, that's easy. Let's move on to, I asked Tim to, this is always kind of a nervous area here, you know, we start to go looking at the action plan. You know, we created an action plan after we did the master plan, and, you know, it's a good idea to have an action plan, but it's also a good idea to pay attention to it, because it could sneak up on you. There's a lot of items on it. I was kind of looking through it, and I know Tim has, do you have copies there, Tim?
I do.
I don't know if anybody's got copies.
I think, I think I gave everyone a copy.
I've got a copy. Does everybody have a copy? Okay. Well, go ahead, Tim.
Well, the, this was kind of the last, last piece of the puzzle in doing the master plan. And we, I tried to, you know, go through early on, and so, some of these items are, fall in the category, I guess, of things that could be done, but, so, you know, I think we need to, we as a planning board, need to take a critical look and see if, yeah, it would be nice to do that, but do we have, over the next 4 or 5 years, do we in fact have time and resources to do some of those things? And so, in estimating the target complete date, I don't think I, I think I went out to 20, couple of them to 2025. I didn't go beyond that, because, you know, I mean, really, who the heck knows what's going to, what's going to happen in, you know, 2026 and beyond? Or, for that matter, who could have predicted COVID for impacting 2020? So, some of the things, you know, I think are important that we do, a lot of them are kind of ongoing things that we do. And so that was, again, a lot of the target dates have ongoing. It's just things that we do every year. Responsible agency, my thought there was, the planning board can't do everything by itself. So, my plan was February and March timeframe to come back with a list of action items that were sort of targeted for 2020 and maybe 2021, and then sharing that with other boards and commissions that could contribute, to see if they were in agreement, that they would like to contribute or, or not, and then take action based on, you know, results, based on the answer we get from various boards. So, that's, that's how the list was formulated. And I think it, you know, as a, as a planning board, we have, you know, not, not gone through this list with a, kind of a critical review, which I think is the next step, that we should either start tonight, or give everyone a chance to go through and then start either, I don't know what's scheduled for our next, our next meeting or so, but by the end of the year, I would think we should have at least those that we think we should do. And there's a few in here that, that I don't, I don't see us doing. Maybe, you know, an, some, one of the actions catches somebody's eye and think, gee, I'd like to really do that, and then that, that would be fine. And there might be things that we, people think are worthwhile that are not on the list, and that's, that's fine, too. I mean, it's, you know, it's good to have an action plan, but it needs to be flexible, so it's a, so it's a help, not a, you know, not a hindrance. So I, you know, I don't know if you, if you want to go through item by item, or give everyone a chance to read through it, or
Couple of things going through my mind. We have workshop meetings once a month. What I think it should be, we should do, is probably put this on the agenda for every workshop, and try to at least look at a few items each workshop. I mean, there's a lot of items here, because it's kind of a little overwhelming, looking at it. Fortunately, some are not this year, so
Yeah.
a lot of them are not this year. But, you know, if you have an action plan, I know we have one at the library, and every month, we do look at it, and we say, "We're making progress towards this one." And, you know, I think it's important that everybody keeps looking at it, because we forget about it. There's all the things that are happening today. You know, there's some good stuff on here, but there's an awful lot of items. So maybe tonight, what we could do is focus on the ongoing and the 2020. And then, you know, defer the other ones till later. What's also important is that, you know, there's some boards here that need to know that, you know, it's on, it's there. Does the Conservation Commission, for example, know, you know, they're on this? You know, they may be some things that they normally do, so maybe they know. So those are kind of my thoughts. Anybody else, Karen?
I also, under this, I guess, the adopting new zoning or, with that, I did have a plan that I wanted to at least present. Would that be better to do that next week?
Well, Karen had a suggested change to the zoning ordinance, and that's coming up. So I asked her, she gave me a copy of it, so I could look at it. So, that's another thing, it's not on here, kind of separate from, from here. I don't know, it might be on here, I didn't, I didn't notice.
I didn't know whether it fell under, you know, adopting zoning
Yeah. But every year, the planning board comes up with suggested zoning warrant, warrants. We need to do that. Usually in the past, it was done by, you know, Dee and Mike would come up with a list, and we would talk about it. It's now October, we should begin to work on it, and, you know, maybe the workshop meeting in November, we ought to put that on the agenda and talk about any, anybody has here, and then, I don't know, John, has anybody been working on that, or does Dee have a list? I don't even know.
Well, I mean, we're going to start talking about it tonight, as time avails itself. I would say, by the November meeting, we'd want to have a pretty good idea what we want to propose, because we're really going to try to have our public hearings for all zoning ordinances for the meeting in December, and advertise for such. So, it isn't, it isn't a mad rush that we need to do anything, and we don't have a whole slew of zoning ordinances
No.
that we're, you know, having to move forward with this year. But, you know, the ones that we want to talk about, again, tonight's a good night for it. I'd say every meeting from here on through the December meeting, we should leave enough time to talk about these amendments, so that we're, we're meeting our deadlines for public hearing notices.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you know if Dee has any?
I don't. And, Tim, are you working on any?
I don't, I don't think we do, but I would, you know.
It really hasn't been a busy year for state statutes to be passed relative to land use issues. And, you know, besides the one Karen's talking about, the one item we're talking about
Right, you have one coming, right.
You know, if we have, you know, a decent, long enough discussion on it, we may be able to agree to some things and, you know, possibly introduce them for the, even the November workshop, and then if we're in some sort of agreement to want to move forward with any of these changes, we'll
Okay.
we'll get them ready for the December.
Maybe you can double-check with Dee and see if she has any others that she hasn't brought forward.
She has not brought it up.
Doesn't have any?
Yeah, she doesn't have any.
Okay.
She would have brought them up.
Well, there's nothing wrong with not having any. I mean, it makes for a shorter warrant. Karen?
The only thing is the time, though. Make sure, if there is something that needs to go on about, I want to know what the deadline is for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the real deadline is that the town with, the planning board would like to have the public hearing for any zoning changes in December. The deadline could actually take place in January.
Right.
If it happens in January, that initial public hearing, there may not be sufficient time for a second hearing if any significant changes take place, because the whole thing is to try to get it ready, everything ready and printed for the deliberative session in February.
Right.
So, you know, we're, we're in good shape now.
Yeah.
But any action we are contemplating, we really want to push ourselves towards meeting that December meeting deadline.
Okay, well, then we should maybe, we'll talk about yours tonight and see where we are.
Yeah.
And as far as Karen's is concerned, if we have room on the agenda next time, I don't know whether we have any applications.
You know, this is what I'd like to suggest, you know, as a hybrid situation, because of, you know, the timeframe we're facing. And I'm just putting this as a proposal. If the Board would be willing to hybrid these meetings as necessary, meaning that we have at least completeness application, if not full hearings, for applications we received for that first meeting in November. And, you know, and the same goes for the second meeting in November. If we need time to go over zoning amendments, that we accommodate that in those 2 schedules, those 2 meeting schedules for November.
Sure. Yeah.
And then, and then for the December meeting, you know, it would be, the goal is to have the public hearings advertised properly, take action necessary in whether or not we have to continue to the first meeting in January to finalize the zoning ordinances. And that's fine because that still meets the deadline well in advance of what we're dealing with.
Right.
And then, you know, we can take action on site plans and any subdivision plans that we're dealing with, too.
Just to make sure I understand, do you know any applications coming before the next meeting and our next meeting?
Yes, there are two that, they're not major by any means. But one is a conceptual slash preliminary. So that's a non-binding review.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's happening. And then the other one is just a minor site plan type of application.
So we, we probably will have time for Karen's next, next meeting. Okay. So we'll do that, Karen, if that's all right. So we got a little off the topic there, but does everybody, is everybody okay if we focus on the ongoing in the 2020s here? Maybe, Tim, we can walk through those.
Okay. Well, the first ongoing one is on page 66, the top, top page NR7. Conduct public workshops on timely environmental projects. The, that's something we would typically do.
Keep in mind to try to include a workshop on those topics if we can.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's an idea, it's something that goes along with the master plan. So just keep that in the back of our minds that we could do that.
Yeah.
Okay. What would be an example of a topic? I hate to ask, but.
Funny you should mention that. The, the Conservation Commission contracted with Mark West of West Environmental to do some analysis on prime wetlands. He's about ready to wrap that up. So I think the Conservation Commission is expecting his report at our, at next meeting, which would be the first Thursday in November. So the deal with prime wetlands is you need to put the information together, hold public hearings, and then it has to be voted on at town meeting. So that's one where, you know, be, not necessarily a public workshop, has to be a public hearing.
Yeah. Is that a public hearing by the Conservation Commission or by us?
Yeah, probably, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, I think anybody can hold a public hearing, it's not.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you have to advertise, you know, it has to be the legal notice in the paper and, you know, there's some guidelines to follow. So that doesn't obviously come up too often. We've had public hearings on conservation easement, we did a few years ago in the town forest. Those are a couple that come to the top of my mind about environment. The, we've had some, some discussions about the MS4, the Stone Water runoff. So that sort of falls into that category. So I think as topics come up, we, we do do that.
All right, so we'll just leave that on there and just, you know, keep it in the back of our minds.
Yeah.
Okay, keep going.
The next one, WR2. Expand outreach and engagement activities to address conservation measures for low-flow fixtures, behavior changes, et cetera. This is kind of a display that we would do at Old Home Day. We've done similar things like that before. So that's kind of a natural topic for that.
Is that really the planning board or is that the Conservation Commission?
I would say more, probably more Conservation Commission.
Maybe we should, I don't know if we can change that. This is, this is a working document, so we should probably change that.
Yeah.
This, this might have bigger impact once we get potable water because I'm sure people, now that they have to pay for water, are going to be looking at conservation efforts to do that.
Well, and that's, you know, that's one, one piece of the education that we need to keep always in front of people's mind, even though once the potable water system is, you know, up and running and we get water from Manchester, that's not an infinite supply, just like your personal well is not an infinite supply. So always good to conserve water.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, hence it's ongoing nature. The next one at the bottom of the page, collaborate with neighboring communities on MS4 tasks. We have been attending Dee more than myself. The Department of Environmental Services is providing monthly meetings for communities to talk about MS4-related things. And there's a lot of education and outreach, MS4-related topics. So there's some good bit of synergy between all the neighboring communities to share that information. So that's something that we do do. Again, it's ongoing because it'll be a while before that's.
All right, keep going.
Next page, pollution prevention WR11. Continue to encourage private residential well testing for property owners. If you recall, a couple of years ago, I think we had an opportunity, we had the state lab lined up so people could bring water samples to the town hall and we brought them all to the state lab. So that's, that's probably not a bad idea to maybe do that every four or five years.
Right, that's, that's driven mainly by the Conservation Commission, then?
Yeah. Let's see.
Okay.
The next two, WR13 and 14. Continue to provide outreach to homeowners related to household hazardous waste collection. We do that, selectmen and primarily do that, I guess. Continue to implement best management practice assessment program for businesses operating in Plastow. There's probably more work we need to do on that. Part of our source water protection plan, we instituted a voluntary inspection where Mike would contact the businesses and businesses that had potential to have chemicals or things that would leak into the groundwater. Like a lot of things, we started, first couple of years, we did pretty well. The last couple, not, not so much. So again, something that, it's not a one-time deal. It's something that you need to work on continually. Then, let's see, allow, promote Plastow Pride Day, that's something that we do. Again, more of a Board of Selectmen topic.
That got canceled this year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
That's too bad.
I know.
Let's see, next one, OS3. Actively participate with regional organizations that support acquisition and protection of open space such as the regional planning commissions and Rockingham, it says Rockingham Land Trust, it's Southeast Land Trust now. So again, an ongoing thing. There isn't, wouldn't say there's a lot of activity every year, but it's something that, you know, when opportunities come up, we take advantage of.
And that's, that's principally driven by the Conservation Commission, not, not to slough off responsibility, but they, that, they look for that more than we do. We don't really actively look, but it's good to keep in the back of our minds.
The next one, OS5. Continue to allocate an established amount of, for funding for the conservation fund each year. We had been putting $10,000 a year in for a while, we haven't done that in the last.
Is that a proposed for this year, too? I'm sorry, for next year?
Yeah. Yeah, probably, probably not.
Probably not?
Budgets are.
Yeah, because of the budget situation.
Plus, there's a lot in the conservation fund.
Yeah, isn't it close to $100,000 in there or something? It's six figures and, and there does not appear to be any concrete plans to spend it. So, you know, obviously, there, there should not be a need to be adding to the fund unless there's a reason to do so, in my opinion.
Plus, when the land comes out of current use, it goes into that.
Right.
Yeah. Should we be talking about what, what's the plan to spend it, if, if there is one?
I would recommend that, but that's concombs per view. And, and I guess my personal feeling, and I know it's off the subject, but with all of these capital reserve funds for this year, if boards and committees do not have specific projects on the plate for next year, we're going to take a very critical look at requests because we really just simply cannot ask the taxpayers to be, you know, funding all of these reserve funds unless there's a specific reason to do so at this point. I think there's like $1.2 million in funding total on all the capital reserve funds. So we need to draw some of that down first, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, you get to a point where you have enough and you kind of back off. But, but on the other hand, the whole principle of squirreling a little bit of Y each year is still a good principle.
It's long-term planning.
You've got to balance it with the short term.
Exactly.
As long as you don't have like, you know, typically like a roof or something you need to do, you need to put a little bit each year, or a fire truck where you don't have, you don't want to come up with $400,000 or $200,000, you know, all of a sudden you need to come up with it. But I agree with what you said. Go ahead, Tim.
So not to belabor the point, but actually just three weeks ago, we got a letter of interest from a person who just bought a piece of land. The, his house and with about four acres. And then that same property has four acres in Plastow. We wanted to include that as part of the town forest when we were doing the conservation easement back a number of years ago. That owner was not willing to sell at a price that we thought was reasonable. And so now the new land owner is back and it looks like we might be able to come to a deal. So that'll be a, a good thing, which sort of illustrates that, you know, you need to, you don't always have a, maybe a set plan to say, yeah, I'd like to buy this piece, that piece. I mean, if you can do that, that's, you know, that's fine, too. But things come out more by surprise from here. So anyway, not to get off on that tangent. OS7, identify wildlife habitat preservation. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the 2022.
2022. Recreation.
Continue on to, on page 68. R5, and the Recreation and Conservation Commission worked with representatives of budding towns of Atkinson, Hampstead, Kingston to expand the town forest. We've been actively doing that now for four or five years. Expect probably sometime next year, we would have a trail map that includes all three towns and a consistent trail signage throughout the three-town area, so.
Great.
The next one, population and housing. On even-numbered years, review the town's current land use regulations in order to determine if existing regulations adequately encourage the type and location of quality, affordable housing in Plastow. That's kind of awkwardly worded, but the, it's something that we do need to do.
So the last time it was done was 2018? Probably, maybe.
Yeah, I, I don't know. There's more.
I thought there was a report that you had to file that said we were in, in compliance or something.
The, if you, you have to have some minimal stock of affordable housing. If you don't, a developer can come in with what's called the, developer's option, I don't know what, I've forgotten now the right word. But developer could come in and just pretty much do whatever kind of housing they wanted. So the thing you need to do is review periodically that you have that adequate housing stock.
Yeah.
So Laurie, I think you probably have a better recollection of it than I do, but I think in 2016, did we not review this in workforce housing and determine that there was adequate housing, but that was, you know, four years ago. But does this also tie into P5 with regards to workforce housing? Because, you know, the, the assessments have changed so significantly over the last four or five years that we may need to revisit this sooner than later.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's, it's time to do this, something we should do next year, for sure.
So should we, should someone follow up on that? And I don't know if you, Tim, or maybe Francine, I don't know if we should follow up on that.
Yeah. I, I just mark it here.
Okay.
You know, that issue is being worked on behind the scenes now, just as an update.
Yeah. So obviously, we, we did not do it in 2020 that I'm aware of, but because of the COVID-19 thing, a lot of things didn't get done in 2020. So that would be a carryover to 21.
Yeah, if you could just follow up, your report back next time.
Yeah.
Okay, so that included P, P5, too, or not?
Workforce, yes, that same.
I would think so, yeah.
Points to the, yeah, same, same thing. Some of these, I think, could be combined as well. They're sort of pointing to the same thing, even though there's, you know, separate numbers. Community facilities.
There's one that is March 2020.
Yeah. That was, that was.
Was done?
Well, I, I did one for the CIP Committee for Buildings and Grounds and it was voted down. We, we proposed that warrant last year and it was voted down.
Yeah.
So we can reintroduce it, you know, this year.
Yeah.
Because I think we sort of do need that.
It'll be back.
And that probably won't, won't happen in 2021. We won't do another reserve, will we?
Well, I, I think I only escrowed $28,000 over the course of what Paul Lucia had talked to me about as far as replacing and potential issues with all of the town buildings. So it's not a lot of money, but, you know, I, we, we literally had an alphabet of warrant articles last year and I'm going to try to hopefully cut that way back this year.
This seems like one that will sneak up on you if you don't watch it.
Because otherwise it winds up in the budget and you don't really want that either.
We got six buildings, six, you know, big buildings, we got two new buildings. So, I mean, this is one that's going to come hit us.
Yeah, we, we have a, we have capital reserve fund already for emergency repairs, which is capped at, it started out capped at 20, I think we increased the cap to 30, which is just a policy decision, it was not, not part of the warrant. So can vary as, so what Paul Lucia's suggestion was, well, that's, that's fine for emergencies, but with, with more buildings, more buildings aging, there's more things that come up, so.
It's preventative maintenance, really.
Yeah, so if we put, you know, if we had, combine those two or establish a new capital reserve, which allowed for expanding on, for both emergencies and planned expenses. So I, I think we just need to do probably a better job of explaining what the intent was because there was no, no delta in the amount of money that got put into some capital reserve. So anyway, that'll be back for 21, for sure.
Okay.
Tim, is planned expenses or planned upkeep, isn't that really a budget item or shouldn't that be a budget item? I mean, you basically have, it's a repeating, it's a repeating cost that you have to pay every single year.
Yeah.
So versus a warrant article to, to ask the taxpayers for money to do normal, everyday repairs, it seems like it should be a budget item.
I think you're talking about two different things. Maintenance is, is an. Maintenance is an annual issue, but what we're trying to do is level fund the budget. So for example, I think our heating system downstairs is ready to go any second. So that would be something that would be put into a CIP program to be planning for, yes. Maintenance is an annual thing to level fund the budget. We're talking about above and beyond, like replacing roofs and things like that.
I thought that Tim had combined those two together.
No, I think the capital reserve that he was talking about was relegated to Town Hall, if I'm not mistaken. Because I know they they redid the, you know, the draperies and, you know, stuff like that with that fund. And I think it was, the thought was that it was relegated to here. We also have a contingency fund, too, which, you know, we can tag for emergencies. And in my opinion, that's where I would go first is on a contingency fund if we, you know, and not tag the reserve funds unless it's a planned expense. But, you know, that's that's up to future boards and and the finance director, yeah.
Maybe when the CIP needs, they can touch on this.
Maybe next week, right?
It comes up.
Okay, keep going, Tim.
So I think all of these.
Yeah, these are the normal, you know, facility type things.
CIP, so I think, you know.
Yeah, we don't need to go through those.
Yeah, maybe, you know, makes sense, maybe, on the ongoing ones, contract that to CIP items. And rather than having, you know, all these separate.
I think some of these the the departments do anyway, so I think that's just part of the.
Exactly, yeah.
Operation.
The only question I I had, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry, CF three. We seem to have done energy audits last year. Does that still need to be on there, or do you want to revisit that, or? We hired Margaret to do energy audits in all our buildings.
Yep, we did the historical society, the library, and the town hall.
Right.
So we, we did not do former courthouse, because it was the courthouse. And we didn't do the police building, because that's new, obviously. But we didn't do the fire part of that. So there's still a couple of things, maybe, that would be, make it worthwhile to do that.
All right.
But you're right, yeah, I mean, the audits that this mentions were completed by earlier this year.
Is that something the Energy Committee discusses at their meetings? Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that'll be taken care of.
And actually, we we actually acted on a number of her suggestions, but there were also a number of them that were way out of line, like six figures to insulate and do a wrap around the library, as you remember. Yes, yeah, so, I mean, some of them were not practical, but at least we had a really good idea of where we stand energy-wise on all of our buildings.
Okay. So you're saying we don't need to go through the the ongoing, the other ones here, unless anybody wants to dwell on them?
Like I say, I think those probably better combined and just.
Okay.
Put them all in the CIP or category. Then, let's see.
Maybe CF 17, maybe zoning subdivision site plan to account for portable water system. That's probably part of the water project, I would think.
I would think so, too, yeah.
This one. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's something we need to to work on. I don't know that we would be in a point to have anything ready, any zoning ready for town meeting in 2021. Because that, as we just talked about 10 minutes ago, that's coming up like sooner than later. But it is something that we do need to discuss. So, you know, for, for example, if you, if somebody's doing a new subdivision, we'd have to supply water. So if the potable water main is 500 feet down the street, seems pretty logical that we would want to connect up the new subdivision to potable water. If it's 1,500 feet down the street, then pretty, I don't know, if we have the authority to make them connect that distance. But it's something that, you know, we need to talk about. Certainly, they can volunteer to do that, that's never any problem.
So so we do have a water workshop on the 26th of October, in which we're going to discuss a water budget. So if you would like, I can certainly bring that up to Underwood Engineering as something that they need to be thinking about down the road to dovetail with the planning board as far as how and where this is all going to come about.
Now, you, Francine, you're you're referring to the subdivision and site plan regulations.
Right.
Not the zoning. I'm confused on the zoning. Is there any other zoning for changes in the zoning ordinances that need to, would they know whether there would be any other?
Well, I I mean, I think it's something that sometimes you want things in zoning, because you want to have people, sorry, either do or not do something.
Right.
If it's in subdivision, then, you know, the planning board can waive that.
Right.
And there's some, you know, case by case basis, that makes a lot of sense. For something like whether you need to connect to a water main, if you start doing case by case basis there, it's, that's a little, little harder. But, but it, you know, I mean, it is something that we need, we need to, at least between now and sometime in 2022, that issue needs to be resolved, might change in 10 years down the road, but.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like it's very important. It's going to have to be dealt with at some point.
Right.
Jim?
Yeah, Francine, I'm sorry.
When, well, I was going to ask Tim, because he probably know better, like in a PRD where they have, let's say, the houses that are behind park.
Yeah.
They're going to have a shared water system. So if the portable water is going past one of these housing develops and whatever you call them, then maybe we could ask them to hook up to the water rather than have a shared well type thing.
Yeah, well, that's for a lot of the condos and apartment complexes. The indication that I've been getting is that some of them would like to connect their pump or disconnect their pump and connect the water main to their pump house. And then, so they get Manchester portable water throughout the whole complex. Others, I think, have indicated that, yeah, they don't, they want to, you know, be out of the, out of the pictures, others not so. So how all that might be connected, you know, it's.
Yeah, we're we're in the process of working through those numbers, actually, right now. And that's one of the questions that we're going to be asking them in, at our meeting on the 26th. Because we need to find, you know, we need to get some kind of ballpark number for how many people are going to be hooking up besides the MTB E people, so that we can prepare a budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know it's chicken and egg.
It would be guesswork, no matter what you did, but you do the best you can.
Yes, we're going to be flipping a lot of coins.
But I'm just thinking, you know, once the water lines are there, and the subdivision wants to go next to the water line, there has to be certain zoning subdivision and site plan regulations that it, that, you know, whatever we want to do, we can't force them to hook up. I assume they could get their water from a well if they wanted to, right? I mean, that's not a, you couldn't have a zoning ordinance or a site plan or whatever that said that subdivision has has to hook up to the water supply. That would never happen.
Well, I mean, right now, it's up to the developer. I mean, they can do one or two things. They can have, say, a 10-lot subdivision, just to pick a number. They could have all 10 of those houses have private wells and and private septic systems. Or more, more commonly, for larger ones, they'd have a common water system. Like Twin Ridge has a common water system. Along Sweet Hill, Greenfield Estates, Sweet Hill Estates and.
Right.
Those all, I think, those all have common water systems. So nobody has private wells. So it varies, you know, from from place to place. And so it's going to vary how people connect to the, to the water system.
Kind of driven by economics for the developer. It's what is the cheapest way I can get out of this?
Yeah, well, I mean, economics and supply.
Yep.
You know, we have had occasions where they, you know, tried to drill wells, and there's not enough water there to supply their whole, you know, community.
Tom?
Yeah, we, we have a common well, I live in Green, Greenfield Hill Estates, so, and we control, we own the water and the well and everything. So there was discussion about whether or not we would look to potentially hook up to the potable water. Some of the things that came into play are the new state guidelines on arsenic levels and things like that. So it's going to require some people, especially with a community well system, to get new filtration systems. So it's pretty costly, so that's a consideration.
Yeah.
You've got the gunstock development, likely would would look to potable water if it ever gets developed. And then Sweet Hill Estates has always had issues with their water, so I think they're going to be interested in looking at that water.
Yeah, I think they were probably the first in line to sign up, because they've had, yeah, continual problems over there.
So I, and I think to Jim's point, do we have, we we obviously have ordinances and zoning and whatnot for wells, for private wells and and leach fields and things like that, so do we have for a public water system?
Yeah.
Not sure, you know, what we have yet.
I would think that, what's the company, Underwood?
Underwood Engineering.
I would think they crossed this bridge before. You put a water, you put potable water in a town, these are the regulations that you need to, you know, you need to look at, putting in for zoning, site plan, subdivision. They must have crossed this bridge before.
A lot of the stuff is boilerplate, you're right, you're absolutely right. Some things, some things could possibly just not be covered. A lot of them will boil plates for every single town that they do, depending on how, 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 how the town, how the town runs and what part of, part they want to be involved with.
And would it not be the purview of this planning board to waive site plans if, you know, you decide to change those, those regulations? It isn't the purview of this board to do so.
We do, we have, since I'm only planning, planning board for two and a half years, but we do update these regulations periodically. So this is something, I'm glad we're putting this in front of us now to, you know, think we should, we should follow up on it. And there may be some things related to potable water. I mean, obviously, we put it on here, we thought there were, so something needs to be done at some point, not tonight.
Pretty soon.
Yeah.
Well, the other, the other one, just to wrap up the water, CF 18, adopt the new road profile that accounts for potable water. So we have, we have a road profile now that.
We just updated it last year, I think.
Yeah, pretty recently. But, and we gave that to Underwood for them as a starting point. So they were going to add the water main. So what that would do for us is describe in a standard way. If you have a new subdivision, you're putting in road. We already have a regulation that all utilities and whatever are underground. So we're, you know, kind of halfway there at least. But then we know everyone, everything's done in a standard fashion. So if you look down the street, the water main is always on the left, or typically on the left or the right, you know, whatever. It's buried so many feet deep, it's connected in a standard way. So that would be based off the water ordinance that the selectman passed just a few weeks ago. It has a lot of that general, higher level specifications. Doesn't, didn't get down to the nitty gritty of like a road profile, but all the components are there. So we just need to fill in a few pieces and adopt that.
Can I ask you a question, or maybe somebody knows this, but what is the right of way? And I see they're working on Hail Spring Road, now they're going up Sweet Hill. I see they're working in people's front yards. There's a right of way there that, what they're digging up is is the right of way, right? Not the people's property.
Yeah.
Is it a standard right of way, or is it?
Usually, they're 50 feet. Not, well, yeah, I mean, the the right of way width is 50 feet, that's pretty, pretty standard.
Yeah, really.
Exactly where that 50 feet is? 500 roads, 500 different locations.
I was just curious.
So for, for example, my property, the, my property line is probably six feet off the pavement. Now, the pavement isn't necessarily the right of way, but, so somewhere the right of way is between the pavement and the, and the property line, which is, hopefully, that's fairly typical, because.
And they're going to be there in a week or two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Jim, on on this subject, can I add a few syllables? It is really important for the town to start planning ahead for these water lines that are going to be installed. I think one of the catchphrases that we should be contemplating is that any new development, when it is available, shall tie into the municipal water service. You know, that, that's, that's a must relative to building up the clientele involved with this, so that the town, you know, has a financially viable water distribution system. And then, you know, most residents, if they are given that option, and, you know, there may be some financial incentives involved with it, or if the person does have the financial means to tie into the water system, most of them will do that. You alleviate, you know, the worry of your well going bad, you know, drying up. We're in a drought right now. I'm sure there are plenty of people in town that'll worry about the elevation of their wells delivering their water needs. So you eliminate that aspect of it. Yeah, in this part of New Hampshire, there's a lot of natural born arsenic. That's, you know, kind of difficult to deal with when you're filtering the, the water needs for your own domestic water service. So, you know, people do tend to take advantage of a municipal water service when it becomes available. So, you know, those are, those are issues that the town has to be ready for, because there may be a lot more customer demand than what people are anticipating. And you want to have everything in place, infrastructure-wise. And and another issue is when water lines go in, it's very important to have a plan to loop those water lines. The worst thing a municipality can do when it's building out its water service is to have a bunch of dead end lines over years. All you have is a bunch of sediment buildup in the water, and then you're, you're dealing with the, you know, a rather difficult situation in trying to keep the water flowing and keep it clean and keeping the pressure constant within the system. So, you know, water looping is really important. A lot of communities don't really implement that type of plan, and it comes back to bite the community.
Yeah, this, this action item seems very, you know, of all the ones we've gone over, very, very important right now. And I, just to clarify what you're saying, are you saying that maybe we should have some subdivision or site plan regulation changes that would, when you have a development come in, kind of induce them or, or not force them, but basically written so that they would be more apt to to tap in?
Yeah, it becomes a financial viability if a water line or, you know, municipal water service is a half a mile down the road, and, you know, they're putting in an eight-inch diameter water line to connect into their 10-lot subdivision. That's a huge expense. But, you know, in that half-mile distance, there may be other potential customers to share in the cost of putting in that water line. You know, that's along the lines, when you, when the town is building out this water service, you know, the town's going to have to invest in its water service. And, you know, there would be betterment issues involved with people tying in. I always bring up Hudson, but they are a perfect example of a, a town that does have municipal water, and the demands for their water service continue to grow. So when their water production does meet the needs of, you know, adding more customers, people can tie in, and there's a fee to tie in based on how much it costs, you know, to put, put that line into that domestic water service. And they have a water department that's well-defined now, and it wasn't so well-defined 10 years ago. But, you know, it's a good model ordinance for this town, and there are other model ordinances out there for this town. out there for this town to try to emulate the best of, you know, and try to eliminate the, um, you know, not so desirable elements of, of those particular communities in their, uh, water, uh, improvement plans.
So it'd sound like we, we would raise this with Underwood on the, on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, and, and also I just wanted to let you know too, that the board is pursuing, um, an application for a bond that the town would take out to assist homeowners in being able to pay for hookups for the town water, and it would just be in their, it'd be added into their quarterly bill. And so, you know, you wouldn't have to outlay several thousand dollars at a whack where, where, you know, so we're doing everything we possibly can. We've, um, haven't we adopted some, um, uh,
Pricing policies.
pricing policies for the first forty thousand gallons of customers that hook up. They don't have to pay certain one time fees. So, you know, we're looking at a, a whole, you know, fa, bunch of factors to, to make it as, as, um, financially feasible for as many people as possible to get the water. And then once it's up and running, obviously, things will flow out and it will be easier and easier for people to get.
But there may be some zoning or subdivision or site plan regulation changes that could help
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they should be raised at that meeting maybe.
Yeah, but I can't raise something that hasn't been approved yet. So, you know, it's again a chicken and egg thing. So
Okay.
I think, you know, the zoning and the planning needs to be sort of in place before we propose it to them.
This is a very important one, just keep it, keep it in front of us and keep thinking
And I'll let them know that that's going to be forthcoming too, so they can stick that in the back of their minds.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I recommend that, um, uh, the committee that's handling this particular issue, um, just offer for the consultant that's, uh, that you're dealing with, um, if there, there are any zoning, uh, subdivision regs that need to be accommodated
Okay.
for, um, that they start working on those. Um, it sounds like you're really heavily into this already, and, you know, we may play a, a peripheral role, but nothing
Yeah.
to the extent of, um,
Yeah.
professionalism that's going into this, uh, program right now.
It could help facilitate the process.
Mm-hmm.
I probably will, um, be at that water meeting.
Okay. Let's keep going. We're into transportation.
All right. So in, uh, transportation, um, T one develops strategies for improving bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. Um, as you probably know, the state DOT is looking at, um, railroad tracks to the library in our village center district, um, traffic calming studies. So, um, think what will, a, a lot of the strategy maybe will come out of that study, um, and we can apply that.
Francine?
And there's, there's a, the DOT, um, I put them on our board agenda for the twenty-sixth. She's going to confirm that to do a conceptual design for the public so they can see what's, what's out there. So everybody's invited to come to that.
What is that?
Um, on the twenty-sixth, our, our agendas are like GMPAC right now. So I, she wanted to come on Monday, and I couldn't do it with the budget. So I believe she's going to be able to come on the twenty-sixth and give us a conceptual design of what the traffic calming
Oh.
uh, would look like. So
I was quick.
definitely attend that if you can virtually.
Okay.
Yeah, the DOT contracted with Hoyle and Tanner, who
Yep.
did their Safe Roots to School and, uh, Westville Road Bridge, so
Traffic calming.
I was really happy to, um, to see that.
Good to.
So anyway, uh, I think that's, you know, kind of wait and see what, what comes out of that. Um, apply for other funds to add sidewalks, ongoing, that, um, we need to do a little, uh, little more work. But again, a lot of that will be based on what comes out of this last, um, thing. Um, complete a weight finding study to evaluate quality
Twenty twenty-two.
It's twenty-two. Okay, good. Next, uh, ongoing one, when adopting changes to Plastow land use regulations, consider promoting mixed use development, which we're going to talk about in twenty seconds.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that, so.
And, um,
We're doing it.
Annual, T seven, on an annual basis, staff, establish capital projects that includes town CIP
Yeah.
for roadway maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So
Right.
And same context sensitive solutions, um, yeah, it's a, a little different, but, um, maybe postpone that discussion until, we do the complete streets maybe in twenty-one. Work with local employers to encourage transportation demand management programs, um, ongoing. We don't have, this, this is one where you don't want to say you don't want to do that, but we don't have any real major supplier. So there's, there's no, no employer that, you know, when five o'clock bell rings, that, you know, fifteen thousand people come out of the factory onto the, the road. So
Right.
I'd be, I think inclined to, um, eliminate that one.
Yeah, I would say.
See that it's
Doesn't really apply.
Very applicable.
There you go. One last.
Yeah.
I don't like the acronym there, F L U there.
Oh, yeah.
Boob, yeah. The Future Land Use, yeah.
Yeah, all right. There's nothing in there that's twenty twenty.
Yep.
I think we, we did it.
Good.
Tom?
Can I add something? Um, and I realize I came in late after this was done, and it's obviously took a lot of work, but one of the reasons why I got involved with planning and planning board and, and obviously came on as an alternate was to sort of discuss our role and our ability to have some influence on what kind of businesses and commercial development goes in and where it goes in in the town. So, you know, we, we've sort of seen what Havel did to us on the heavenly donut side, um, really kind of squeezing us. And I don't know if there's anything that we could have done about that. But then we've got the conversations about the tire stores and, and those things. And we're all, it's all tired conversation, but is there something that we can do as a board to influence what goes in, where it goes in, what it looks like, that it's more beneficial to the town residents?
Yeah.
And, and the community versus, you know, businesses that take advantage of our logistical situation with, with mass. So I was looking at like F L U five, for example, and that's a twenty twenty-three topic, but is that
Which one is it?
F L U five. You know, manage the quality of new non-residential development.
Where are you at?
It was the last page.
Seventy-one.
Last page, F L U five, page, whatever. Seventy-one.
So, you know, is something like that
Yeah.
a higher priority because we've got a lot going on. We've got new businesses looking to potentially come here. We've got potable water, and we've got Havel still really putting the squeeze on us.
Yeah, very good point.
Yeah.
I would absolutely concur. I mean, that's one of the reasons I got on the planning board too. And, uh, you know, you can influence this as each application comes in. That's one way to do it. You know, we, we have done that. And, you know, we, we approve ones, you know, legally, we have to legally approve them, but we do, you know, try to make them good developments, you know. Exeter Med, I think we did a good job on that one. Even the storage, I think we did a reasonably good job on that one. So as they come in, we, we do have an impact. But what you're saying is more, some process where, you know, we're guiding as we get potable water, the businesses that come in to get better business. You know, what is better businesses? You know, everybody's got their own opinion on what a better business is.
You have to consider where the potable water is going to be going to first.
Right.
That determination is going to be coming up one twenty-five.
Well, that's why we have the topic that's the next topic, is to, to look at one twenty-five, and John's going to talk about some ideas he has to make sure we have the right development there, mixed use or whatever, what, whatever you call it. And once the water goes in, you know, you, you know, there's going to be a demand, and we're going to get more projects. But I think John is going to talk to that.
So just two.
Sorry, Francine.
No, let Tim.
Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I mean, these, you know, target years were, those are pretty arbitrary. If it's something that people want to work on next year, by all means, let's, you know, let's jump on it. Just because it says twenty-three year doesn't mean we can't do it in twenty-one.
Well, I think we could at least, you know, to Tom's point, change it to twenty twenty-one, that particular one, F L U five.
Yeah.
This is a ongoing document, and it's a good idea to, to move that one up, I think.
Yeah. All right.
I mean, we, I guess what we would have to do is, and I don't know if this is on the internet. I, I looked for it. I don't know if the latest master plan is out there, but anyway, we do have an official
It is on the town website.
It is? This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well
Okay, it's out there, so.
If you notice, it starts on page sixty-six. That's page sixty-six of the master plan.
Okay.
Right, right.
So, so we'll make these minor changes to the ac, action plan. I mean, this is a fluid document.
Yeah.
So we should change that to twenty twenty-one. I wouldn't suggest anyway, is, is one way of, you know, I think we will as a board. I mean, I want to, Tom wants to, I think everybody wants to focus on, you know, how can we get good businesses here as the water goes in.
Yeah.
Francine?
So I actually had a question for John, and this is perfect timing. Um, do we have legal wherewithal to, um, set percentages of types of businesses that we should or could allow in town, like no more than twenty-five percent of tire stores or whatever? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I can add tire stores.
Well, well, I know, I always pick on the tire stores.
That's a good one.
But, but do you know what I'm saying? So can we develop an overall plan to say, you know, this is the mix that we want in our town?
This is what we're looking for.
And is that a lawful thing for us to do so that when we approach our, you know, Max point of this, we don't consider it? Or I, I don't even know if that's legal to do that.
You don't have to keep talking. No, you don't.
No, okay.
John, do you have a mic there? Just make sure you're talking to a mic. There's a mic right there. I don't think that one works, the other one.
The other one, yeah.
Yeah, the capitalist system usually takes care of that.
Okay.
Uh, to a point where, you know, if there are too many pizza shops.
That's true, that's true, yeah, yeah.
I just want to get back on to the town website.
Okay.
Okay. Um, are you guys all ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, um, yeah, I think we are. Well, so that's the end of that topic, but I just want to say one more thing. We, we'll keep this in front of us, and we'll put it on the agenda. We'll keep going back to these.
Okay.
And hopefully, you know, things will get done.
Okay. Um, I want to begin my presentation to make sure everybody has a copy of, um, what I printed, and if you had a chance to read it
Yep.
leading up to the meeting, and besides ignoring the couple of typos within it, and as soon as I can put my hands on my own copy. Did everybody have a chance to read through it just briefly at least?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you may have even gotten into, um, you know, at the end, I commented that you might want to look at some
Give me two, yeah.
examples of, uh, mixed use zoning that's out there on the internet. There's just a plethora of, um, ideas and suggestions and examples, um, of what communities are doing for themselves to, um, create these more viable, economically sustainable, uh, mixed use, um, environments within their borders. And when you say mixed use, it's, you know, it's a whole smorgasbord of uses that seem to work well together. Um, and a lot of economic development, um, has trends, trend cycles. Some particular use is really hot one year and, you know, reaches a saturation point or, you know, moves out of favor with the audience and, you know. So mixed use ultimately is a nimble, um, zoning district that provides for, um, a constantly changing environment, and that's what gives it the economic sustainability, the economic viability, because it's really a living zoning district. And these mixed use districts are really important for communities that are striving to create jobs, you know, to expand their tax bases, generate more revenue, to provide for these public services without really, you know, the whole idea is to lessen the tax burden on the residents by having a, a strong viable, um, exciting, uh, mixed use, um, environment. And for Plastow, when I first came here, going on three years ago now, as most people, you know, that recognize this stuff, one twenty-eight, one twenty-eight, I mean, excuse me, one twenty-five corridor, I always call it one twenty-eight. Uh, but the Route one twenty-five corridor is the town's, uh, commercial district. Um, and it has been that way for over forty, fifty years. And everybody that's been around town for that many years has, has seen the transformation that has taken place. And that's, that transformation is basically a result of the economy and what the market conditions are. So you have tire warehouse, um, development up here, big, big box retailers. You have the need for your supermarkets. All of that has taken place because there is land there. There's a client base for sure. Um, you know, and their client base is that, um, a lot of people from Massachusetts love to come up here
Yeah.
to take advantage of, uh, no taxes for whatever they're purchasing, that they have to pay for, self-reliance. So that, those market conditions have created what's out there. Now, the whole idea for communities is to keep pace with what the market is creating. And right now, as everybody realizes, you could buy anything over the internet and it'll be delivered within a day or two. Maybe seven days if you take the slower, uh, in free shipping. But, you know, a lot of the stuff you would have to get in your car for just a couple of years ago, a few years ago, now it's just commonplace that we're, we're buying. So the struggle is for all of these storefronts, uh, to remain viable as, number one, places of employment, uh, number two, as communities, uh, realizing a rate of return for that particular space on their property. So when I'm looking at Route one twenty-five and that whole corridor, I see a future for it. But this community has to recognize that future. And that future is trying to create, uh, a mix of uses. Now, in my report, I mentioned that when you look at the, uh, list of uses that are already allowed in the C one zoning district, um, there are a multitude of uses that are allowed. What is missing is the multifamily component. You know, and most people think about, uh, multifamily in a mixed use commercial environment. It's residential above the first floor of commercial space, retail space. But it goes beyond that. As I put in my report, um, you know, the board in the town, ultimately, if they were to decide on all of this, uh, would probably want to contemplate, um, multifamily residential self-standing, um, products, being apartments, condominiums, uh, mixed in within the commercial district, within the retail, within the offices, uh, within all of the shops, within the parks that can be planned for, uh, the pedestrian corridors, you know, the well-lighted, um, walkways that would, you know, be part of the future of the one twenty-five corridor. So all in all, what I'm saying is, the C one district, we could be able to transform if enough people want to, uh, jump on board with this idea and ultimately work on an ordinance. Uh, and we could put this together, I could put this together in a couple of days right now, given a good discussion of what I'm talking about with the board this evening, and, um, actually move towards, as soon as next spring, um, a zoning ordinance that would contemplate or allow for this mixed use to take place. So how would we do that? Everybody's following me?
Yeah.
If, if the board wanted to allow for this particular zoning district to have multifamily as proposed in my report, and by the way, in the C two district, multifamily is already allowed. In the C two district, you can see up here, if you're familiar with that, correct? C two district is
Yeah.
with my laser beam going here, is this purple area here. So that's the, you know, the village district, basically.
It's basically Main Street.
Right, right.
So that, that does allow for, um, multifamily already, and there's a multitude of uses that are allowed within the C two district. Um, and the only real big difference, um, between the two districts is that, um, you know, larger retail development goes on out here, um, larger development on scale with, you know, the, the lot sizes that are within the corridor. And then, um, you know, the multifamily would be, um, larger development also. So that's, that's the use change that I would propose with this. But also included in the staff report is this contemplation, um, for the allowance for a conditional use permit. So for whatever is this contemplation for the allowance for a conditional use permit. So, for whatever is not listed, um, you know, there's really no definition. If a developer came in with a use that did not fit any of the categorical uses allowed within the district, this conditional use permit provision would allow for the, the planning board to be the permit granting authority. Now, this is in accordance with the RSAs that are already in place, so that the permit granting authority for it, they put the likeness of a special exception, of which the ZBA has the permit granting authority. But with the conditional use provision within the New Hampshire RSAs, a town could either make the ZBA the permit granting authority for the conditional use permit, or the planning board. In this particular case, what I'm getting at is that whatever use is not listed, but a developer wants to propose it, they could propose the use in the same manner that they would approach the board with any other use under site plan or subdivision. And that being, you could start with a conceptual review that could progress to a preliminary review, that could progress to a formal review for the particular use. And the special exception, or special, uh, the conditional use permit, this board could contemplate requiring a supermajority vote, or just a regular majority vote of the board to allow for that use. So, you could go supermajority, which would be four out of five, or you could go with the simple majority, three out of five, that would vote ultimately after the hearings and whatnot, to allow for that particular use. Now, the interesting part of this, too, is that any proposed use would either fall into the category of a simultaneous application for site plan review, or if it's a subdivision, subdivision review. And then you could also get into the, the super hybrid, where you're dealing with site plan, subdivision, and conditional use, you know. So, if there is a developer out there that's looking to do something, that the market is calling for, but our ordinance doesn't provide for.
Yeah.
But it does make sense, through a public review process, for the town to contemplate and to go through a formal process of permitting. That's what this is all about. So, it's a catch-all, uh, it's a catch-all permitting process for anything that may be out there that the town finds attractive, and there's a permit process in place for that, which right now.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah. Everybody thinks within the, within the box. This is an ordinance that allows people to start thinking out of the box. And I really believe that, um, all communities, in order to economically survive, viability survive, create that tax revenue necessary to, to provide for your schools, your public safety, your government service requirements, you, you gotta be on the top of your game when it comes to zoning provisions, and, and really start thinking that way. And what this mixed-use provision allows for is for us to start thinking that way, which is healthy for Plastow, um, in the long run, to really start thinking about, especially when you take into consideration, we have water coming in. We have a water service that needs customers, you know.
So, so this is basically a proactive approach to future planning for the town?
Future planning, and, you know, the future, um, economic viability approach for the town. You know, I really, I really stress on communities that, um, the hardest thing for communities to go through, the hard times, just like when you lose your job.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in a community, when you lose jobs, or you're not producing the jobs that you could be producing, if you had the right zoning in place, you know, and, and, you know, it's just, it's a matter of staying strong and staying healthy. And for you, as a, as a member of your family, it's really important for you to do that, in order to produce the income, to keep the roof and, and feed your family. And it's the same when you think a community is a family.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we all should be thinking, as a planning board, and all of the public officials that are involved with the planning of the future of this community, that we're all trying to, trying our best to think in that manner. What's going to make this community stronger? What's going to make it healthier? What is, what is going to make this community thrive better than it is today? And I think this water, potable water system coming into town is so, so important.
Tom?
Can't be underestimated.
John, is your, is your idea almost, I know on a smaller scale, sort of like what Salem and Tuscan Market are doing, in the sense that they've got, uh, Tuscan Village, they've got condos, and they've got a, you know, a market basket, and a Starbucks, and they're all intertwined. I, I know we don't have that space, but is that your thought process?
It's, it's thought process, but, you know, even, you know, if you go anywhere in the country, especially, you know, areas of the country that are really growing population-wise, that potentially, I mean, everywhere in Florida, for example, and, you know, many areas of the south and the southwest, um, you know, they grow new communities, and they really do have to have planning. And, you know, planning is done on a county-wide basis, statewide basis. You know, in New England, it's much smaller in scale, with the exception of the Salem, once in a while, you have something that large. That's a big, that's a big development when it comes to.
Yeah.
Um, New England, you know. Um, Joy, I mean, Hudson has another big development plan for the Green Meadows property right now. Um, my hometown has a couple of massive ones, you know, and look at Boston. When you drive into Boston now, I don't think anybody has ever seen at any one time so many cranes in the skyline. They're just everywhere, you know, and, um.
What, what's to sort of, if we go change this along one-twenty-five?
I just interrupt before I lose my train of thought.
Sure.
And, and really, what's happening in that Boston skyline is the allowance of mixed juices. I mean, that drove South Boston to go from, you know, the downtrodden, multi-decade, downtrodden condition to where it is today. It's one of those forefront locations. The same with Somerville. I mean, come on, look, look at the Somerville skyline. Um, you know, a lot of people don't like this stuff, but, you know, this is what is happening, and it's all driven by this mixed-use development stuff. And I'm just saying, for Plastow, the, the real emphasis is to try to protect, and you will protect, to the extent possible, the quality of life of the neighboring areas of town. Um, one thing I forgot to mention earlier, um, Plastow, like, like many towns, has great zoning already in place. You know, your residential neighborhoods are really well-protected. I mean, you don't have to go too far off of one-twenty-five, and you're in quiet neighborhood environments. It's amazing how short the distance is between a commercial corridor and a quiet neighborhood scenario happens. It doesn't take that far of a distance to get to that point. And when you're there, you're in your neighborhood. And the whole idea is to protect your neighborhood areas, and always improving the quality of life of the neighborhoods, while at the same time, making certain that within those corridors that should be developed relative to their income potential and their, their quality of life issues, their user-friendliness, places, a place to go for people to congregate, to work, to, um, to recreate. You know, it's, it, you're creating that environment within the town. But when I want to go home, when I'm done shopping, and, you know, working and whatever, I can go home to my quiet household, my quiet neighborhood, and enjoy a walk with the dog and the family. You know, say, hey, I'm so lucky I live here.
Just a follow-up to Tom. I mean, he asked about, you know, Salem has a mixed-use, Tuscan Village, whatever. I, I'm interested also in, you know, what's the benefit, what's, what's going to be the impact of a mixed-use? If we put this mixed-use in on one-twenty-five, what are the benefits to us? I mean, do we get more attractive businesses? Do we lower taxes? I mean, we need to start from what the benefits are, and then make sure that if we put this in, it's going to give us what we want. So, I, could you just comment on that? Because I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that, you know, we put a mixed-use on one-twenty-five, it's really going to have, it's going to bring those attractive businesses. You know, they're just, really what I, where I come from, I think that's what we need. We need more attractive businesses on, on one-twenty-five.
I, I'll give you a couple of really, really good physical examples. Um, one being Hudson, New Hampshire. And again, I was the planning director there for seventeen years, beginning in two thousand and two. And I truly emphasize to them that they have to recognize that the strength of their economic base, and that being Lowell Road, Route three A, that whole corridor, and that they have the infrastructure, they, they do have sewer capacity there, they have water capacity. The water capacity goes beyond the sewer capacity, or the sewer district, but, um, there's such a strong economic base, and a healthy economic base that's growing there. And they're a community of, of twenty-nine square miles. And they're a community of twenty-nine square miles. Having to leave the house, you know, and it's going to become more and more like that. So all those storefronts end up becoming empty. And what are we gonna use that land for? You know, let's put a mixed-use development zoning ordinance in place, especially one that has the meat and potatoes of a conditional use permit. So stuff that we can't contemplate right now or not contemplating, and the list of uses isn't provided for, but we have this great project that's being proposed. Well, let's at least give them the avenue. And whether it's a simple majority, a supermajority, we're giving them an avenue to present and for us to investigate the potential and actually possibly permit the potential if it passes muster with the permitting process.
Just let me, one comment, then I'll ask Greg about it. My comment is, it sounds to me like you're answering Tom's question in the sense that this is another tool, another, you know, arrow in our quiver to attract businesses. It's not gonna happen overnight. You're gonna have the tire store next to the mixed use. It's gonna take time, but it sounds like there would be a tipping point where businesses begin to see that Plastow changing. And, you know, it's just not gonna happen overnight. You're gonna have some of that disparity, if you will. Greg?
The question about the mechanics of the process. We put this in place, we have a developer come in, and I wanna do X that you have not even thought of before. So the board approves that choice. And now five other developers come in and say, I wanna do the same thing. Can we say no to them? Or because we said yes to the first one, we have to approve all the rest of them as well?
What ends up happening, because success does breed success, you know? And, you know, before you know it, you have a gold rush situation going on. With gold rush situations is that, you know, it's like, oh, you gotta rush into that place and mega-killin' and, you know, while you can. And the check and balance involved with this is that you have to make sure you have a roadway system that can handle the added volume created by the added. And if you don't, you gotta work on that. You know, so the mechanism you use, planning-wise, is that every impacted intersection, every impacted roadway, you, Joe, developer, wanna come in with a four-million-square-foot development. You have to produce a traffic study, and that traffic study surviving the scrutiny of peer review, that your road improvements that you're going to, you're going to have to implement will not exacerbate, you know, a level of service at all affected intersections, all affected roadways.
But there's more work for the planning board to do besides saying, yes, this use is something the Plastow wants. It's basically saying, yes, we want this use, but here are the requirements for, to implement it.
Which are already in place, in state statutes and zoning. You know, you don't, you don't blow out a community where it just can't handle it. You don't, and I'm not contemplating, I'm not proposing that in the least. So that all development has to be measured in its entirety in what its impacts are and what infrastructure improvements have to go along with that. You're not, you're not going to get overwhelmed with massive development until there's sewage. So that's one of the big checks and balances. Just so much development you can put on a property, even with potable water, potable water. Am I pronouncing that right?
Potable, yes.
You know what you mean.
You know, the way, you know, where New England is, we don't pronounce ours. We don't do a lot of things that other people. We eat, we eat potatoes.
John, a question from...
Yeah, one of the considerations is that we don't have the right to just put curb cuts in anywhere we want. That is controlled by the state.
Right.
Which means that will be determining what can be developed there and where it will be developed. Because otherwise, if we move a little farther north, we're gonna have to have a turnaround farther up.
Right, we're partners.
That has an impact on the development.
Oh, yeah, no.
And its success or failure, potentially.
125 being a state roadway, state-controlled, they're partners with us. This is, you know, nationwide, it's the same scenario. You know, usually you have state highways, the development centers of all communities. It's just kind of a natural thing, even though it's man-made. But, you know, that, it goes hand in hand. We have to work with them. They're not gonna let us...
Well, let me add something to that equation is that most of that consideration is the fact that the traffic will be coming south to come down. What about that which is going north and then has to go south to go back up? Or go back home?
Right.
To work or to home, however you phrase it.
Right, and again, one of the biggest, you know, bottlenecks right now to this whole thing is getting to and from 495. And I can tell you, because I'm part of the MPO in Massachusetts concerning the 495 corridor, there is not a plan in place right now to do anything with that exit. And there's nothing in place with Haverhill to help improve that bottleneck corridor leading into Plastow. So, you know, this town, Haverhill, the state of New Hampshire, the state of Massachusetts, all have to start, you know, working with one another in order to improve that corridor. I know it's been looked at before in the past. You know, when you're dealing with the two different states and the two different towns within two different states, you need a piece of cord, you know, you need to, you need a lot, you need to do a lot of work.
Can you, a little confusing, a conditional use permit. We have the ability to approve a conditional use permit for wetlands, I believe, currently, right?
Yeah, yep.
You're saying that currently, we don't have the right to, you know, say you can, you know, put this usage in a particular, you know, parcel or subdivision. We don't have the right. It's the ZBA, right? So are we, are you saying that this CUP would give us the capability to bypass the ZBA?
Yeah, because this particular conditional use permit, the permit-granting authority for it is the planning board. It would be the planning.
So they wouldn't, you know, if they wanted to put a use that was in our zoning ordinance that says you can't have this use, they usually go to the ZBA? So they bypass the ZBA in every instance?
Yes, yeah, so, no, just for this commercial one zoning district?
Just the C1?
Yeah, if, if it's a conditional use that's being proposed and submitted the application, the language would state in the zoning that the permit-granting authority, it already would be.
So that would be another tool to facilitate the process? I mean, they could always go to the ZBA, but, but this would be a more palatable to the developer?
Tom would be way better off, in my humble opinion, if just for the commercial one zoning district that we're contemplating this mixed-use thing and just for those uses that aren't listed, that the conditional permit-granting authority, conditional use permit-granting authority is the planning board.
Okay. Do we supersede the same stringent criteria that the ZBAs have to grant those?
That's, that's within the language.
But don't, don't we wanna use that to protect, you know, the borders and whatnot? Don't we want those types of protections?
Right now, they step through five, five criteria.
Yeah, those same criteria.
Would apply to us.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Which they already do anywhere with any use.
They do it, yeah.
Yeah, we have to make sure that, yeah. That's it, we, we ultimately control the fate of any development. It either passes muster because it meets all the criteria, or it doesn't. And if it doesn't, it's denied, and, you know, you get it.
The five criteria, as I understand it, I mean, they are criteria that are legal criteria, but they're a little bit, they're, they can, they can make rulings that are, there's no, nothing to stop them from saying, this doesn't apply, and vote against it because, you know, you have to meet all five. But Tim, you had something?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Greg asked about, can we deny certain uses? Right now, we have, in our ordinance, it states gas stations need to be a thousand feet apart. And that's, that was based on a health and safety issue. And the other, the other thousand-foot criteria is for used car dealerships, you know, vehicle dealerships. Now, that one, we were able to get passed and taken to court and won a court case based on a number of different things. Number, number one, in our master plan, we describe 125 as kind of three sections. The, the big shopping center section from, you know, the state line to the railroad tracks, essentially, that's where all the big shopping centers are. From the railroad tracks to, I think, Main Street, and I'll say, I've forgotten now exactly, and then Main Street north. So they all had their own kind of characteristics and types of businesses that were there. And so in the master plan, it, it points that out and says that we don't want a developments that are only gonna have pizza places. We don't want, at the time, there was a preponderance of car dealerships. There's still plenty there, but, or, and, you know, it's not good to have a lot of any one business because then if that business declines, then you, you kinda lose the whole commercial, that whole section. So that was, that was part of it. The second part was some health and safety issues about dripping gas and oil. Although, I mean, I don't think that's nearly as significant today. I mean, most, you know, as compared with, say, the 50s and 60s. You know, I was always running with a pan under the car to catch leaking oil so it didn't stain the driveway. Those days are pretty much gone. I mean, accidents happen, but, but the important thing when the car dealerships was, it's outside storage. So it's not a neatly-contained building that you can landscape. I mean, naturally, you're gonna have cars outside to display. And that adds kind of to the clutter and, you know, whatever. So we were able to, based on those different criteria, pass a thousand-foot ordinance between car dealerships. So there are ways to do it, but you've gotta have some, some technical reason that if you didn't have that restriction in there, it was gonna impact health and safety or general welfare or, you know, whatever. Those are kind of tough, tough to do.
Tim, can I just say, a lot of those restrictions are, say, political? Or they're somebody trying to protect their use, like the gas station. We had that ordinance in place, eight-hundred-feet separation in Hudson. Probably vastly unconstitutional, you know, not challenged, you know, but you don't wanna be fighting these things in court. You know, the multitude of uses that are out there, and somebody thinks they're gonna make a bundle on one corner with a pizza shop, and, you know, somebody's gonna make a bundle right across the street with the better pizza. You know, that's just stuff that happens. And I don't think, I really don't think we should be trying to curtail that because, hey, if that guy is creating a better pizza than the one across the street, well, it's gonna put the other one out of business. That's the way it goes. But, you know, you start controlling who gets a permit for a gas station, you know, it creates problems. But I do understand that you don't want all gas stations. You don't want all used car dealers. One way to, one way to curtail that is to allow for the opportunity for more uses to be permitted within a zoning district. So what I'm saying is, this mixed use, over the long run, will probably be the catalyst that will allow for higher-end, more higher-end uses than the restriction that's involved with, you know, restrictive zoning. You know, and, and the corridor itself is always changing. I see it, it's always improving, it's progressing into the future in that the lower-end uses are being supplanted by higher-end uses. And it's going to continue to do that. And, you know, that, that corridor leading in from 495 is probably the biggest curtailing factor relative to that 125 corridor meeting its potential. Because until that bottleneck is improved upon, so that higher volume, that limits.
So just kind of summarizing where I'm at in this. You're suggesting that mixed use and the CUP would add another tool for us, and it would, would help accelerate a better 125? So the question in my mind is, what is the downside of doing it? Is there, I'm trying to think of, what would be the, why wouldn't we do it? I mean, would there be any reasons why, you know, it would create other problems? Or why wouldn't we do it? I mean, and the other thing that goes through my head is, if you, you know, you're not gonna get a lot of people wanna, I don't think, just my own personal opinion, that wanna live on 125. Maybe I'm wrong. So, I mean, when I think of mixed use, I think of, you know, an apartment building next to, like Tom said, a theater and a, you know, a restaurant and that kind of thing.
But you can also have a 500 condo skyscraper, like they do down in Birmingham, right next to, right next to a residential, I mean, to a commercial plaza. So there are a lot of examples where not only do you have a mixed use of different types of commercial properties and businesses, but you also have residential right in the middle of it. And now you have an issue of, can Plastow absorb 500 people or 700 people or 1,000 people? Can we actually absorb that? And can we absorb the traffic that that's gonna cause and the services that would be needed by those new residents? So, yes, you do have time to think about this. And it sounds like, if you're gonna pass this, there's a lot of work to be done to make sure that those controls are in place so that when we do get an innovative idea, we have a framework that they can, that we can approve it under. I'm concerned, I'm still concerned about, we say yes, and now, as, as John was saying, it's, it's a cash cow, and so six other people wanna come in and do exactly the same thing. And they're saying, you, you said yes to the first guy, you can't say no to me. So now you have more than what you really probably wanted.
Well, you know, growth is inevitable. And planners' jobs are to plan for that inevitability. And part of that planning is making sure, most importantly, that your road infrastructure can handle it. And you already have those tools in place. You can't allow for development to take place that's going to create a traffic congestion problem that is off the charts. You know, all traffic is measured A to level of service F. F goes on into infinity without going further down the alphabet. So, you know, you have real bad levels of F at places. And then, you know, level F traffic really isn't bad at the initial F level. But in any event, no development is allowed to move forward You know, so, you know, if, if a project is that large, and the traffic generation from that project is causing that much impact on a roadway network, then that roadway network has to be improved upon on the back of that developer. That's the cost of doing business, and that's how it's done. One thing we're not talking about is the five-year potential of electric vehicles and everything that's being envisioned regarding those. In five years' time, and that's a short time span, we're probably all going to be buying electric cars, but there are many of us that will not have to buy cars, because you will have autonomous vehicles picking you up and dropping you off and picking you up wherever you want to go. You know, so, you know, people, many people are not going to need to have a car. They're not going to have to invest in car insurance, because they're not going to have a car. All they're going to do is, "I want to go here," like we do now, anyway, but it's going, everything's going to be automated. You know, those cars picking you up are not going to have drivers with them, they're going to be autonomous. You know, all the trucking that you see out there today, they're going to have no truck drivers. I mean, the trucking industry is gearing up for, you know, hundreds of thousands of less truck drivers, and it's all going to happen in a very short period of time, whether you're ready for it or not, it's happening.
Okay, I mean, it's now quarter to nine, just time check. I just want to say that we should probably wrap it up around nine. This is a good, healthy discussion, and Karen?
Yeah, doing any kind of zoning or doing any kind of building, change whether it's mixed or not. There's also requirements for high buildings, how we have accepted, that you're not, those would all have to be changed, too? No?
No, no. We're not, we're not talking about any height changes.
Okay, but those are all considered in the plan when somebody comes forward and...
Yeah, and that would, that would be a potential for a conditional use permit, but it would have to pass muster with the fire department, you know, police, everybody. You know, are we ready for five-story office buildings, or are we not? You know, that's, that goes with the territory, but you know what? We can say no. You know, it's not something, oh, if you're going to propose something, and it's going to get shoved down our throat. No, we're the permit granting authority.
So, Fran, do you?
So, this is, this is probably just to summarize so that we can move on, but I think Plastow's a little over 10 square miles, and so we are very limited in what we can do within Plastow with mixed use, because we have a lot of wetlands within the town. So, I think if people are concerned that, oh my God, it's going to turn into the Tuscan Village, or Framingham, or whatever, I don't think that we're physically capable or able to do that.
They don't have the acreage, too.
Exactly, exactly. So, I think this mixed use just allows more flexibility, and it also allows imagination to come forth, but it will be, in my opinion, very specifically relegated to certain portions like the 125 corridor, so we can still keep our town-village pristine and intact, which I think is what most of us on this board would like to make sure that we preserve. So, I'm not going to say anymore, I know we need to move on in this, but...
And I'd love to close by saying that the 125 corridor, it isn't that big, and, you know, this town is only trying to provide for government services for 8,500 people. It's not 85,000 people.
Right.
You know, I think the whole idea is to try to keep it small-ish and quaintish.
Seventy-seven.
You know, but at the same time, allow for the potential of improving that environment. Right now, I look at it, and, you know, it's your typical 1960s, straightaway strip mall stuff, and you know what? We can, we can really work towards improving that, that whole, that right-of-way corridor, you know, beautifying that and introducing, you know, higher uses, and just creating a much more quality environment down there than what exists, and a prideful environment. And I think that's what the town wants to do over, over the long run, is to improve its entire environment, improve its parks, continue to improve its neighborhoods, its education system, you know, making sure that we remain a safe community in which we all enjoy to live, work, and play, you know. You know, so that's what we're striving for, and this is just one element.
Yeah.
For the overall community, that we should be always planning for the holistic approach of bettering the community.
Well, I'm interested, as a member of the planning board, anything that would help us improve 125, or, you know, react to the potable water going in, and being prepared to attract good businesses, and kind of change the whole nature of 125. If this is a tool to do that, I'm not totally convinced it is, but it is a tool, I'd suggest we, you know, I don't think we're ready to, I don't think we're ready to, like, vote on a zoning ordinance, we can move it to the next meeting and have a further discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely, definitely. I mean, this could take two years.
No, it's a good...
You know, whatever it takes. You know, I'll give you another example, real quick. Melrose, number-one community in the country in this recent study that was done, and it was all because of mixed-use zoning that they allowed to be introduced to their community. And they transformed this whole downtrodden railroad bed into multifamily, and, you know, they're downtown, you know, and single-family houses, the housing market is astronomical down there, you know, but they, what they did, they planned for it, they implemented it, and the development took care of everything they wished for, and that all took place over a 15-year period of time.
And in that respect, just one thing that strikes me, if you look up 125, you have one property that's vacant currently, it's almost 40 acres, owned by Market Basket. That seems like a very good candidate for what we're talking about.
That's exactly right.
When I go up and down 125, I don't see a lot of other, maybe there's three or four others, but that one really strikes me, is that we really should be focusing on that one.
Yeah.
I don't know what the status of Market Basket is.
You know what they do, too?
Yeah.
Supermarkets, not naming any, they always buy these lots...
I know, they stockpile.
Keep out the competition.
Right, yeah. My neighbor was, worked for them, so...
You don't have to put those buffer measurements in place, they're out there, killing off the competition whenever they can.
I always wonder whether the town should be talking to them and, you know, seeing what we could find out. I mean, it seems like, you know, that just kind of sits there.
It's probably going to be a super...
That would be an attractive thing for other businesses, too.
It's probably going to be a supermarket basket, you know.
But has anybody in the town talked to them in the last couple of years? I don't know.
No.
Well, with the water coming in...
Maybe we can't say, I don't know.
No. Only to, to abate their assessments, that's about it. That's the only conversations we've had with them.
Water coming in, though, that could be the catalyst.
Yeah, I know. It's sitting there.
Yeah, and now that they're through with all their problems...
Okay, so, sticking with the nine o'clock thing, we have a couple more items. Thanks very much, John, that's very, very important, very useful to talk about it.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Did you read this? Yes.
Okay, so, we're going to item number eight. We do have a request for an escrow release. We do have a draft motion for this, if anybody wants to make their motion.
Yeah, I moved the bond that's being held for amended site plan at 6, 8, and 10 Danville Road, as well as any accrued interest, be released and returned to James Industries and HLLC, any account closed.
All right.
And it's based on the fact that we get satisfactory reports from Keith, saying all the work has been done, and the owner did request a release for the bond.
Okay, motion by Tim, second.
Second.
Karen? All right, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Objection, 5-0-0 passes. We have another motion here, I think it's a different one, or is it?
Yeah.
Yep.
I moved the balance in the escrow being held for the amended site plan at 6, 8, and 10 Danville Road, be released, returned to James Industries and HLLC, any account closed.
Okay, motion by Tim, second.
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Objection, 5-0-0 passed. Okay, is there any other business? I have one item, does anybody else have any, anything?
Is this old or new? Are we on?
I'm sorry, Karen?
Are we on new business, old business?
We just did new business.
Oh, okay. I had a question, too.
Go ahead.
Do we have a new building inspector?
Yes, Peter Blanchett.
Peter Blanchett?
Yeah.
Is he full-time or part-time?
I believe full-time, but I'm checking on that. I'm going to be meeting with him and Mark on Friday, so...
Now, is he, is Mike retired, right?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so Mike, Mike Dormand is retired, and Peter Blanchett is the new building inspector, so that's breaking news. Is that any other questions? That's actually my topic, so you stole my thunder.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That's all right. Any other questions, concerns, whatever? If not, I'll close the meeting at 8:53 PM. Thank you.